Wait. Any kind of decision?
Yeah, we should know. No, no view, no go. Okay.
I'm going to.
I have seven o'clock. I'm calling the Battleground City Council regular meeting at April seventh, two thousand twenty-five to order. Please stand if you're able for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance. I'd be like to say something. To read out the leadership stance, one nation, under the individual, put your team and justice.
You have Mr. Lee, please.
Mayor McCoy.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bowman.
Here.
Councilmember Kipers.
Here.
Councilmember Ferran.
Present.
Councilmember DeRozier.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Overholzer.
Here.
And the clerk is present. That concludes the role.
Thank you for that. Our next up's agenda approval. If anybody sees a reason to add, subtract, or divide the agenda, now would be the time, although as it entertain a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Bowman, second by Councilmember Ferrer. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Passes unanimously. Brings us to council member reports. First up is CRDC. Do you have a report for that one? No report for that? Brings us along to RTC, which is a Regional Transportation Council. Not really anything to report out on that. They are in a, compared to most RTCs, fairly stable financial. So if for some reason federal government doesn't cut any checks, they're good for a number of months, almost a full year, which an organization like that is pretty good. So just a bunch of programmatic things, safe streets and requests for bids are projects going out. So not much to report there. And then that brings us also to, I sent you council an email. That was a request that came in for us to sign on. And there was a draft letter for support of the IBR bridge. Does anybody have any concerns with having me sign on to that? Go ahead. Councilmember Davis?
I thank you, Mr. Mayor. Went over this quite a bit and I'm not really sure why we're getting this as a group from the mayors to do it as far as we've already, with the Clark County Transportation Alliance in November. That was stated in that. The resolution that we did earlier in March, first paragraph of that was that we support the bridge. If we were to do anything, I would prefer that the city write their own with the reasonings why I they don't mention anything about the cost. They don't mention anything about light rail. That to me leads to the potential for things to get put in. So we put our name on it and then they say, oh, well, what we meant was. I do not have a problem. We, it's been said over and over. We need a bridge. But this is not what I am comfortable signing off on. If we were to do something, I would prefer that we as a city state it. I think it's been said quite enough already. Quite frankly, it's kind of redundant, but I just don't. I'm not going to support this right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Who are we sending this to?
This is a request that came from Senator Cortez. I'm sorry, what?
Governor.
Uh. Yeah.
Share it better to Senator Governor. And Congressional.
I was not at that meeting, by the way. So the meeting is referenced in that email. Just FYI. So this email, you have as much information as I.
Like what is, what is exactly, because it says, thank you for your attention to this urgent matter. What exactly, what is the urgency? What is the matter that's so urgent, I guess?
I, I'm guessing there's talks of funding and I'm, I don't know, I shouldn't do any conjecture. I wasn't at the meeting, so I'm not sure. Again, whatever's in this letter is as much information as I have as as you do. Anything I would say would just be conjecture.
Okay.
It would be just the mayor. It was, it's going to be the mayors of Clark County. It's just saying, we need a bridge. Let's build a bridge. I'm, I'm fine with it as it is.
You want to send it?
What's that?
You want to send it?
Yep.
Okay. So in other words, we're just having the mayor sign off on saying, we need this bridge. Please fund us
Mm-hmm.
in any way possible.
Pretty much.
Like, kind of like what they're doing on Echo as well, when they're just putting out a letter like this, saying, hey, please don't stop the funding coming this direction because we do need it.
I, I think there's, yeah, I think there's some concern that they're, they're seeing pushback. This, this doesn't mention light rail or tolls on purpose because it, it's a separate discussion. So, yeah.
But I think Councilmember Ferrer, as you, as you bring it up, that's, you know, they're talking about billions of dollars in transportation funding right now. And, and they're putting those packages together. And if there isn't support regionally for those type of things, then they just use those. They'll allocate those dollars somewhere else. So when, when there's, I think when they're, me personally, when they're saying this is urgent, we need to be in this funding source, that, you know, whatever they're going to do, we need to have funding from the state. The state's part of that to participate in this and not use it.
Oh, quick question. If we have an update on one of those bills that are on the floor in regard, I know it passed through the House. Did it get through, or through the Senate?
Which bill?
It was the one where they were putting in, what was at one point, or, oh gosh, it's been, it's been a while. It was last month. It was, what was it, a billion or one point six puts us, it allows us to seek bonds for
Bond of the tolls. Sorry, we're talking about
Yeah, for the bridge.
I, I don't know.
We know what the update is on that because that would be funding towards the bridge right there, yeah?
It wouldn't be.
Possibly help with any shortages we might be experiencing due to the federal government withholding funds? Do we know?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's maybe outside the purview of this letter is just generic. Build it.
I'm fine with it.
No, just consensus is fine.
You get it.
Not seeing any other objection. I'll send it. It's just going to have my name on it, not City Battleground. Nope. Okay. Brings us to some presentations. Who's introducing our speaker? Is that our distinguished city manager or distinguished city engineer?
Good evening, council. Tonight Rebecca Royce is here with Clark County Community Services to talk about the five-year plan.
Good evening, councilors. I'm Rebecca Royce with Clark County Community Services. I'm a program coordinator who oversees funding from the federal government through the Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD, specifically the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnerships Fund. As a recipient of those funds, we are required to do a consolidated plan every five years, and we are in the middle of doing that process. The consolidated plan identifies the needs of communities here in Clark County and then strategies and goals on how we're going to meet those needs using the CDBG and home funds. The, I'm also part of or staffed to the Urban County Policy Board, which is made up of the mayors or their designee from all the small cities here in Clark County. And excluding the city of Vancouver and is chaired by a city counselor. Battleground has been an active participant in the Urban County Policy Board for many years and has applied and received funding through that application process for CDBG funds. And we have three active projects going on right now. So we are here. We have hired a consultant to help us with that consolidated plan process. We wanted to bring this to your attention to get your feedback, the community, Battleground community feedback on so we can see what the needs are and incorporate that feedback into the consolidated plan. So I would like to introduce Elizabeth McNanny with Resource Consultants, and she'll be providing you a presentation this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, council and staff. It is lovely to be here with you tonight. I am happy to be someplace close to home. I am upriver in Mosher, Oregon, and do this work around the country, and it's really nice to be able to drive and not have to fly. So this has been great to work with Clark County. We have been working with city councils and really getting some great feedback and some, some questions and things like that. So feel free to let me know after the presentation or during it if you have questions or want clarification. So the agenda is, we'll just do a quick overview of entitlement funds and the consolidated planning process. And then we'll talk about next steps and get any feedback. So how do you become an entitlement community? You are either a city that reaches fifty thousand people in population, or you are the primary city within a metropolitan statistical area. Or you are an urban county, which means you have two hundred thousand residents or more outside of the entitlement cities in the county. So Clark County is an entitlement county. These are formula grants. There is actually a YouTube video that shows how HUD makes this determination. You can find online. It's riveting. I might recommend watching it before going to sleep, but, but there is a formula that they use that really has a lot to do with population, poverty, housing stock condition and things like that. So for CDBG, the funds are really about housing and community development. The interesting thing with CDBG funds, even though it's a HUD program, you can't typically actually build housing. You can support the building of housing. This is also designed to help with community development needs like parks and sidewalks and public facilities and things like that. The home partnership is a little more prescriptive and it often is about actually building housing, supporting the actual construction of housing or renovation, rehabilitation of housing. And TEBRA or tenant-based rental assistance. So the county funds a couple of tenant-based rental assistance programs throughout the area, and that really helps people stay suitably safely housed. Here are the income limits, and with CDBG, you are eligible to receive funding if you are at eighty percent or below of the area median income. And typically with rental development programs for the home program, you're eligible to receive assistance if you are at sixty percent or less of the area median income. So you can kind of see those numbers there. They've gone up just a little bit. The new numbers just came out. And I'm going to update, update the numbers in the plan, but they've gone up just a little bit as of very late last week. So the overview of the CDBG program, CDBG has to have activities or projects that meet a national objective. And it's really about creating a suitable living environment, providing decent housing and expanding economic opportunities for low and moderate income residents in the county. The three main national objectives that every activity or project or goal has to fall under are benefit LMI households or areas. Prevention or elimination of slum and blight, and that's not used as often. There are some very specific restrictions that come with that national objective. And then the third one is to address an urgent need, and that's really about natural disasters. The event has to have occurred within the last eighteen months. It has to have critical health and safety issues for residents involved, and there has to be no other funding. You would never use the urgent need national objective unless HUD tells you you can. So the core principles are really about benefiting low and moderate income residents and areas, parts of the community. Participation. So we've been out at libraries. We were at the Battleground Library recently getting surveys and talking to folks to get feedback. And really that's a key component of this planning process. Leveraging and partners. You'll see here in a moment what I mean by that because there's not enough money in these buckets to solve any one problem. So it's really about leveraging those dollars to go the furthest that they can. And then strategic targeted investment because by leveraging the dollars and being really strategic about where the money goes, you can have a bigger impact in the communities that you're serving. So here are some of the things that are eligible for CDBG funding. And you can do housing rehabilitation, which the county does for low and moderate income homeowners countywide. Some economic development activities. The county supports micro enterprise development under this category. Really helps small businesses owned by low income folks with technical assistance and other ways that they can make their business thrive. So it's really important to the community. There are public services that can be supported, and this is just, this is not an exhaustive list. There's also public facilities and public infrastructure. Things that cannot be paid for with CDBG dollars would be things like fundraising. You also can't pay for the general conduct of government. You can't pay to upgrade buildings used for the general conduct of government with one very simple exception. And that's ADA upgrades. That's the only time you can do anything on a building used for government purposes. And you can't pay for operations and maintenance. So while you can pay to upgrade or build a park in an eligible area, you can't pay to mow the lawn. So activities that you undertake with CDBG funding that are multifamily activities, at least fifty-one percent, and typically it's far more than that, but at least a minimum of fifty-one percent of the residents have to be low to moderate income. For single-family homes, it is a hundred percent. If you're doing a project that's a park project or a sidewalk project, you have to define the service area for that. And the beneficiaries have to meet that fifty-one percent LMI standard. Any project that doesn't, isn't eligible. The home program is a little more prescriptive and really is about building, building housing to meet the needs in the community. And also providing things like tenant-based rental assistance. It can do other things, down payment assistance and helping in those ways, but it's really very housing focused. So a lot more but it's really very housing focused. So a lot more prescriptive. Here are the award amounts. The CDBG award for the current year, which is program year 2024, was just over $1.5 million. So you can kind of see that that really isn't, again, enough to solve any one problem, which is where the leveraging comes in. Up to 20% of that dollar value can be used for planning and administration. And that's necessary with CDBG because HUD has a lot of requirements on those dollars. Monitoring every activity and subrecipient that you work with. Really making sure that your reports are in and tracking the way that they want you to also. So really, it's day-to-day administration, very hands-on. Up to 15% of those dollars can be used for public services. No more than that can be used for public services. For the home award, it was just over half a million dollars. And because it's a little more prescriptive, it doesn't mean it's easier. It's just a little more prescriptive. You can use up to 10% of the dollars that you receive for planning and administration.
Yeah, I think you said it on the last slide. I do apologize. Can you give me an example of the public service?
So childcare, domestic violence services, homeless, if you're operating a homeless shelter, things like that, senior services, meals on wheels. So it's really the hands-on service, not the facility itself. And so here you can see the piece of the pie that Battleground has received. And this is really back through a fairly long-term history. But you've got a Battleground has a fairly decent-sized piece of that pie. And these are projects that are underway, as Rebecca talked about, and there have been some completed projects. This is just a little bit of information profile-wise from the most recent data that we can capture. By the time it's up here on the board in front of you, it's already old. So we do our best, but we work with the American Community Survey Data and things like that that HUD provides. We also do work with PolicyMap that often has some better projections and some information that they can provide, and that's woven into the plan. So why are we here? We are developing the five-year plan. And that's really about broad strategies, goals, and objectives. And we're also putting together the first-year annual action plan. So the consolidated plan talks about, talks in broad strokes. And the action plan talks about more, you know, what you're going to do that very specific year. So we're putting together the first one right now with the consolidated plan. And there'll be four more through this cycle. So the components are, you know, kind of summaries and needs assessment, a market analysis. The strategic plan is the buckets, the funding buckets, like the big buckets that you're going to fund. Public facilities and infrastructure, planning and administration, housing, things like that, public services. And then the one-year action plan is where you really drill down just a little bit more. So in the consolidated plan, you start with needs. And we usually just utilize the objectives that HUD has provided. Create decent, affordable housing, a suitable living environment, and expand economic opportunities or opportunities for residents primarily low in income in the county. That covers everything you can actually do under both of these programs. And then the goals, you drill down a little bit more. And then projects, so a goal might be public facilities and public infrastructure or neighborhood improvements. You might break those out into two categories in projects. So the top two are in the consolidated plan, and projects are actually in the annual action plan. Activities are not a part of these plans at all because they're the discrete things that you're doing on the ground, not part of the planning process, but they have to fit in the buckets. So here is an example of how that works. A need might be to create a suitable living environment. The goal might be public facilities and infrastructure. A project might be public infrastructure improvements to benefit Clark County residents who are low, moderate income. And then the activity is the part that's the other side of our reporting program for HUD. That would be a discrete activity. There might be many. There might be a few under that one project. Next steps. So we are still, we are almost complete with our stakeholder, our individual stakeholder interviews. There is a survey that is still out, and we would love it if we could send information and you could help us get that distributed even further than it already has been. We received some great feedback at the library when we were there. It was really nice. And targeted meetings, things like this to get feedback. And then we are preparing, kind of finalizing everything. And it will go out for adoption with the county council on May 6th. And then at some point someday, when we know how much money the county's going to get for the fiscal year that starts on July 1, we'll be able to submit it to HUD. So here are just, I'm not going to read them all to you, but here are just some things that we're hearing from the surveys so far. And we'll make sure, you know, if you want, you may have access to this after the meetings so that you can ask for more information if you want to on any of these areas. Or if you want some summary information, we can also send that. But we're getting some really great feedback from folks in the county. It's been really, really nice to be out talking to the public. We also were at the Point in Time Count, the Homeless Services Day. The Homeless Connect, is that Project Homeless Connect? Yes. And we were there on site and talking to people that day and really finding out what needs are. And we have the links for the survey there, but we can send those to you electronically also. We can also get you QR codes. I would happily stand for any questions or comments that you have, and thank you.
Council, any questions?
Just one. I tried to get onto that survey monkey, and it asked me, I'm like, am I on the right survey? It asked me just like a few questions, and I'm like, I was expecting questions to be more like, well, what do you think is needed in this area in regards to housing? I think it asked once, and then the second one was, what do you think is important outside of the buildings? Does that sound like I was on the right one? I got it through the county, and I'm like, but then when I linked back in it, I was like, maybe it took me somewhere weird. You know, it's the internet. It does random things on me. And then I tried to get back in, and it took me somewhere totally different. So just wanted to put that out there and maybe if you-
We'll make sure that the links are correct. But I was on, I used the QR code recently, and that was working. But we'll make sure the links are going to the right place. And we can do, we can make sure that that's happening now. And our survey guru is not here tonight, but, but I can have him go on either this evening or early tomorrow. Double check that.
I'd say that we intentionally kept the survey really short. The longer the survey is, the less people are likely to respond to it. So it is a very simple survey. But if you have any other feedback, you can email me or Elizabeth or any of our staff, and we can absolutely incorporate any additional comments that you have. We would be glad to incorporate that into the whole planning process. Thank you.
And that's my email on the screen and Lauren, who's working with me. And you really are welcome to email me if you wake up in the middle of the night and say, oh, I wish I had asked this question, which I do all the time.
I have a question.
Yeah, pardon?
I have a question.
Okay.
So when you talked about the grant and the planning and administrative portion of that fee, is the, is that tracked just during the, the development and the execution of whatever it is the project is? Or are there ongoing administrative reporting that needs to happen?
Yes, there's definitely ongoing reporting that has to happen. But the cap on the planning and administration is annual. So you can only spend 20%, even if you're monitoring a project that you funded three years ago and that has been ongoing and you're tracking that. That doesn't track back to, you know, you don't get to charge that three years ago. You have to use that money in the year that you're awarded that funding. And that's the interesting thing with the planning and admin and public services. It's the only thing that you cannot have move forward for multiple years. Because we all know large projects take much longer than one annual cycle from July 1 to June 30. But the planning and admin is gone if you haven't spent it and you have your new amount for the next year. Thank you.
Just a couple of quick questions for me. The urgent need bucket, is that funded in addition or is it part of the annual allocation?
Part of.
So there's no requests, something bad happened, we can't make, there's no funding mechanism within that for it. Is you would abscond the, the other process and say, we have an urgent need and we're taking that cash. Okay. And then the, the money that is allocated, is that just based on, is that per capita? Is there an income play to that if a lower-income county get more than a higher-income county? Yes?
Yes. So it's based on poverty rates, which bring in, income into consideration, population size, housing stock, which includes condition and age and things like that. So, yeah, so it is, it's a bucket of factors. They have two different ways that they can determine it. And your grant number determines which one you are. But they do both calculations each year and give you the one that's the best for you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes, thanks.
Haven't seen any other questions? All right. Well, thank you so very much for coming here. Rebecca does a great job in CDBG, so thank you guys for coming to Battleground and telling us and getting our thoughts on it. Appreciate it. Mr. Hersick, you got another one to introduce?
Yeah, so continuing with our Clark County theme, Joelle Locher from Clark County Solid Waste is here to talk about yard debris contract.
Good evening, councilors. My name's Joelle Locher. I'm the Solid Waste Operations Manager for Clark County. And we have a bunch of fun solid waste projects going on. I wish I could spend all night talking about them, but we're going to focus on yard debris tonight. I do want to mention that we are also working on the Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan Update. So just in the theme of plans and five-year plans going around, we will be coming back in the next couple of months to talk to you about doing a resolution of adoption for that. I did also want to mention that we just kicked off the North County Transfer Station Siting Study. So we are looking to cite a new transfer station in North County. So I'll have an update for that as well. That just got kicked off. So I wanted to introduce Tatum Flowers, who is a fantastic project manager on our team. And she's going to be our subject matter expert, explaining more details about the yard debris contract.
All right. Good evening. Can you all hear me okay? Let's see. All right. Good evening, council members and staff. Thanks for having me. My name is Tatum Flowers, and I'm a Solid Waste Operations Specialist with Clark County Solid Waste and the Yard Debris Collection Contract Manager. So as you all may know, Clark County has since the early 1990s elected to procure yard debris collection services for unincorporated residents within the county as well as cities and town who decide to sign on to our contract. So our current contract is set to expire this summer. And last summer in 2024, we went out for a competitive procurement process for a request for proposal. And we then selected in late fall our awardee and contractor and service provider, Waste Connections of Washington. So I will just briefly go over the services that they will be providing. So this is a single-family and multifamily contract that is an optional subscription-based service for yard debris only. Again, our service provider is Waste Connections of Washington. We selected them because they were the most qualified as well as the most cost-effective proposal. And we are super excited to have this because it is in line with our old contracts. So it's low-cost services, flexible service types, as you will see, and pretty much similar services as our residents were previously getting. They will get with this new one. So our two different service types, we have an every other week, which is a twice a month pickup for yard debris or an on-call service, which basically means residents have a cart and they can get it serviced whenever they would like, just by calling Waste Connections to come in and pick it up. So this will be a 96-gallon cart with our current contract. It is the picture over to the left, which is a teal yard debris cart. The service provider will be exhausting that teal inventory and going to a green yard debris cart. All of the materials in this cart are just yard debris that are in your lawns, except for your dog toys. So it's your plant and garden waste, your grass clippings, things like that. So what is the contractor responsible for? They are responsible for the customer service personnel. With our contracts specifically, they are live local agents here in Clark County. So anybody who is calling in or asking about service is getting a live representative, not a robot or the alike, as well as the contractor is providing all maintenance, personnel, drivers, any education and outreach, as well as management for all of these positions. They are then also providing the carts. They are procuring all of the carts, the trucks, the maintenance facility, as well as how, in our specific contract, we have a local customer service office located on Northeast 94th Avenue in Vancouver. So this is a place where customers, if they would like, they can go in and pay for their services as well as talk to any representatives about any issues that they might be having. Next, the contractor is responsible for all billing and education and outreach. So billing each customer as well as notifying them of their services and their options. So as the contract manager, what is my responsibility? And what's the county's responsibility on this contract? Is monitoring and compliance, any data reporting, legal documentation that is required, as well as ensuring that the service provider, Waste Connections of Washington, is in compliance with this contract. As well as we provide an annual rate adjustment for the collection rates, which we annually approve, review and approve. So you can see that in Appendix D is the compensation, inflation adjustment factor calculation and formula for how these rates are adjusted. Next, we communicate with you all as city and then the town in case there is a breast you of any awareness of anything that's happening, any changes that might be happening with the contract, any amendments. I and the county would be informing you of all of that, as well as we regularly talk with the contractor as well. We have monthly meetings, check-in, just make sure we are providing excellent service to customers and residents. And next, we are also planning and preparing for any changes in state, changes in any state laws or mandates. So how does this benefit the city? Again, through our competitive procurement process, it's providing the lowest cost of service as well as a few options for flexibility in service types here every other week, as well as your on-call services. Again, no contract oversight. If you have any questions, please reach out to me. I would love to answer them as well as to save you all time and money. So it's a little hard to see on here, but again, this contract and the contract current contract rates, as well as this new contract are the same. So we really wanted to emphasize that. The only reduction, the only difference is a reduction on the every other week for the new contract, beginning August first of two thousand and twenty-five. In a few months, it's, it was reduced by twenty-five cents. So you can see all the prices listed out here for our current, our, our current contract rates, as well as the new contract rates are all the way to the right. And if you all don't know, for Clark County and Clark County wide, if you're a resident here in the county, you can scan this QR code or look up Recycle Right app on your app providers on your phone. And this, you will then put in your address and it will give you collection reminders as your garbage recycling or yard debris collection days, it will remind you, as well as you can search up any material that you're trying to get rid of, and it will tell you how to safely dispose of it, recycle it, or where to properly take it. So, thank you all, I really appreciate it. If you have any questions, I am here.
Council, any questions? Go ahead.
I just have one. On the on-call, you can just call and have them pick it up. That's, do you guys see that being used more for people to have small lawns or people that need collection more?
Hmm, that's a good question. I would say it's just, it depends on who wants the service. It's more people who don't like have a whole lot of yard debris all the time. And then they're like, oh, I have it once in fall or twice in fall and I want to come, have it come picked up. So it's about a third of our customers, two-thirds of the customers are every other week.
Okay, because that was my only concern. We, we talked about this when we talked recycling and how many times those big trucks are running over our roads. And that's the only concern is for me is if, if, if an on-call is, hey, I need it every week and that truck is running into the neighborhood for one can, and then coming back the next week for all the other cans. We're doubling the amount of times that truck is, is running across the road, so.
Yeah, so just to kind of clarify on that point too, and I've clarified with the service provider as well, when they call for on-call, it's the same week, like they're going to pick it up the same week that every other week is picked up.
Perfect, that makes sense then. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you for that, clarifying that. I was looking at the, I think it was like what, a slide or two ago, and it gives you the breakdown and of your, yeah, thank you. Says your on-call is six thirty-four, but then it says your on-call cart rental.
Yeah.
So is that for your renting? Do you have to rent that cart for everything regardless if you're in every other week or a pickup?
So every other week, that is included, your cart is included in that rate.
Okay.
And that's twice a month pickup. And then the on-call, you have to rent the cart that per month, one ninety-two. You, you rent that each month and then whenever you want it picked up, it's a six thirty-four.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
What percentage of the, are all battleground citizens subscribers to the recycling services and yard debris pickup? Like what's the, is everyone doing it, or do we have some outliers?
Yeah, I would say. So it's a optional subscription base, so people can opt into it. It's not a mandatory service and I think the last I checked, you had about twenty-two thousand-ish of your population and we have about four thousand yard debris customers in your, in your service, in your city.
So, so about order or less?
Figure three people per household.
Yeah, we've got, we've got like, I think just under seven thousand water connections or so. That would probably be, you said four thousand? Yeah, so we're at a little over fifty percent.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then my second question, maybe more to city staff, do we have issues of with any areas where people should have the service and don't? And like, are there problems with garbage around or garbage pickup or?
For yard debris in particular, we have a few examples of, you know, like wetland areas where people will dump lawn clippings back into them. So that's one I've heard of, but generally speaking, there's not a ton of issues. And in the grand scheme of things, I think we have ninety-some percent for garbage service. Because garbage service is not mandatory in the city. But we're at ninety-some percent, I believe, the last time I checked, so. The occasional issue, but not, not a ton.
Thank you.
Is, is the option to have a thirty-two gallon can next to your full ninety-six gallons still available?
And can you repeat the question again, I'm sorry?
Uh, if, at one point they had, you could call it, get a sticker if your cart was full. Additional cart, okay.
So the service for every other week is up to ninety-six gallons, they will pick it up for that service charge. So you could have a sixty-four and a thirty-two to make your ninety-six in written, as it's written in the contract. However, if you have a ninety-six gallon cart and then you have an additional thirty-two, that additional will be that three sixty-nine.
And that's not a subscription, that's just as, as needed, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, thank you so much for coming up. Appreciate the information, thank you. One, I'll, I think I'll, maybe you want to go at the end or the beginning? Okay. Do you want to grab this and while I read it? So we have a bit of a special announcement and I'll read what's on this. I'll read what's on this plaque. This is from the City of Battleground Police Department. For Communication Manager Alicia Smith. Battleground Police Department formally commends Alicia Smith, Communications Manager and Press Information Officer for her extraordinary efforts and invaluable assistance in solving a challenging and devastating hit-and-run case. Her professionalism, creativity and dedication were instrumental in bringing this case to resolution and delivering a sense of justice to the victim and her family. On January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, the Battleground Police Department initiated an investigation into a tragic hit-and-run incident involving a female pedestrian who sustained catastrophic injuries and was not expected to survive. The vehicle fled the scene and with no witnesses or surveillance footage, the likelihood of solving this crime seems slim. Despite those challenges, investigators analyzed evidence at the scene and determined the make and model of the suspect vehicle, along with the corresponding damage it would have sustained. Recognizing the need for public assistance, detectives reached out to Alicia Smith for help in crafting an outreach effort. Alicia responded with exceptional professionalism and skill, creating a highly informative and visually compelling post for the press and social media. Her post detailed the incident, subtly appealed to the public's conscience and included stockholders' photos of a vehicle similar to the one involved in the crime. The manner in which she presented this information was both impactful and engaging, ensuring it reached a wide audience. As a direct result of Alicia's efforts, the post generated a crucial anonymous tip within just one day of publication. This tip led detectives to a residence in Woodland, Washington, where they located a vehicle matching the description, complete with the corresponding damage. The evidence obtained allowed detectives to identify the suspect and establish probable cause for an arrest. This breakthrough would not have been possible without Alicia's expertly crafted outreach. While the victim is not suspected to survive her injuries, the rest of the suspect responsible for this senseless crime has provided some measure of justice for her and her family. Alicia's contributions exemplify the highest standards of professionalism in service, reflecting one of the core values of the Battleground Police Department, quality service. Alicia Smith's dedication and exceptional work in this case have earned her the deepest respect and gratitude of the Battleground Police Department. Her efforts are formally recognized and commended for their significant impact and alignment with the principles of justice and community service. Signed Dennis Flynn, Chief of Police.
Mayor, thank you for indulging us with that. Good evening. I will try to make this relatively brief. The city manager said we provide a overview of what we did in two thousand and twenty-four and our goals for what we're doing in two thousand and twenty-five. Some of this you might have seen in the retreat, but for some of the things that we've accomplished in two thousand and twenty-four, here we go. You already saw this slide, this is basically the org chart for everybody else that's in the room of what our agency currently looks like. For our overview, it's a little hard to read in the back, but we listed in two thousand and twenty-four, when I got here, four different goals that we wanted to achieve. You can see there were several as far as our fleet, our fleet was pretty dated. We also wanted to roll out body worn cameras. The third goal we had was traffic engagement, getting officers out there, making car stops and engaging the public. And then we had a software update that we want to do, not only for our use of force, but for our field training. We have a significant amount of newer officers. You were provided with our annual report, that we had some extra copies that were made, that are available here if anybody would like one. Our patrol cars, as you know, this is what they used to look like. With the help of city council, we were able to get new cars. We involved the officers that were at the department, as well as our professional staff, they all had input into what the new design would look like. The community has been very, very supportive and we're currently for two thousand and twenty-five looking to also our badge update, so we can hopefully see that this year. Made sure that we're trying to use technology as efficiently as we can. As you know, we rolled out the body cameras, they have been absolutely wonderful. We've received a handful of potential complaints that we're able to go right to the body camera and this just takes any kind of guesswork out. It records audio video, we're able to see everything that, that took place. It's been very, very helpful. An additional benefit to the body worn cameras is it helps the investigators in their role as well. Because you have what the officers put down in the reports, but certainly, as you can imagine, a lot of details. So something they might not have thought was important. The detective assigned to the case is able to look at it and also glean additional information. I had talked about our drone usage, we're working to increase that. Our plan is to continue it again this year for harvest days. Just as a review, because we talked about this about nine months ago, it's got tremendous capabilities and we're looking to expand our program as well. But just for a quick recap for a twenty-second video, you'll click that on. This is just some of the stuff that we are able to do. You can see the white car was doing donuts and burnouts there in the Walmart parking lot. Coming in on the bottom of the screen is the police car. So we already know now who the offender is and should that offender have taken off, we can at least try to keep an eye on it with the, with the drone. This is just a good example of how we're using that technology. Our traffic safety, one of the things that we're able to acquire this year is something that the streets already uses. We wanted to have one specifically for the police department called, this particular piece is called a jammer. What you see is exactly what we put up on the light poles. Because we have finite resources, any, many times when we get a complaint about speeding issues, typically what I'll ask them to do is put the jammer up. This will typically run for a week. It's a radar box and we set some parameters in there and it produces a report. So just by looking at this report, it tells you where the, where it was at, how many cars came through. Tells you what the speed limit was. And then it sets a, the eighty-five percent, eighty-five percentile, which Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, with that number where you see thirty-four, that means that eighty-five percent of the vehicles on this particular report were driving thirty-four miles an hour or under. Okay, I just want to make sure I got it right. So just looking at this, now that doesn't mean that I did not have speeders. But when you look at where we're going to deploy our resources, it shows there's a relatively low amount on this. So I use this as one of our gauges as to where we're going to deploy our resources. I'll speak more about our traffic safety in just a second. We are proud to roll out our ghost car. Hopefully next week you will see what we call Manny two point O. What the revision will be next, next week is Public Works was able to use one of our decommissioned traffic signs. Fingers crossed, what we should be able to do is now when we put it out, we'll be able to set a speed. And if anybody hits that speed, the overhead lights will come on, really add into the effect, because this was only effective really during the day. This will now allow us to deploy it at night and that's a special thanks to our folks over at Public Works who've done a great job. So we're hoping to demo that this week and have it deployed next week. Speaking of crime, we're very, very happy to report for two thousand and twenty-four. All of our major crime categories are down. You can see some of the reductions in crime that we've, that we've had. One big area that we did see a spike in is our fraud. Digging down deeper into that, these are mostly older folks in our community that have been victimized. This is something that you're seeing nationwide. A lot of the offenders don't even live in the United States, they're coming from other countries, but it's certainly something that we are aware of. We try to talk at the, the seniors luncheon on a regular basis and to provide education. A third piece that we're happy to report is our, not only our self-initiative activity, which is getting the guys, getting the officers out of the cars, but also includes our traffic enforcement. You can see just an absolute ridiculous number on the bottom, which was the addition of our parking enforcement officer. She's done incredible work, which why you see it's up over two hundred percent. So those are what the officers are accomplishing now. We'll take that in just a moment to talk just a little bit more. I know that you can't see this, I just red-blocked to show you the statistics that we submit at the end of the year. This just tracks exactly what I just showed you on the prior screen. Just a highlight of a couple of our criminal cases, people talk about old little sleepy battletown. We've got quite a bit here that keeps us busy. On the left, you might remember that we're able to go after the massage parlor that was engaging alleged acts of prostitution. Through a investigation, they were able to not only do enforcement efforts there, but the business closed the very next day. So that is gone. On the right, you'll see that we were fortunate to work with the county in arresting two people that were involved for twelve area bank robberies. They were right here in our city. So as a reminder, I let the officers know, you, you gotta dig, they're here, you just gotta dig. But we have people that are in our community that have no business being here. We also rolled out peer support and our comfort dog this year. On the top is our peer support team. Very happy to also tell you that we have a clinician that is on call for us, Dr. Lindsay Torres. She not only is on call for us, but the contract that we have with her, she comes in and provides wellness training four times a year. One of the wellness, we've asked to include financial wellness, because financial stress causes just as much impact on our officers and professional staff. And then, of course, the one that steals the show is Raph down there on the bottom. The goodness that Lieutenant Purdue and Raph have done is, is hard for me to even put a number on. Every single place they go, they're immensely successful. Because of this program, we've had other agencies in and around Southwest Washington and also in Oregon that have asked us, do you have a policy, can you share it with us? We want to implement something like that because of how good it's doing. Two thousand and twenty-five, there's a, another compressed look at the goals that we have set and I'll just talk briefly about them. One of those is to become re-accredited. Less, less than thirty percent of law enforcement agencies in the state of Washington are accredited. The reason this is so important is I really believe that we've got great cops. Well, that's wonderful for me to say. But when you're accredited through the state, that's not what Dennis Flynn says. This is the state of Washington saying, you guys have provided proof to a hundred and forty-six different best cases. That's how we can say that you're a very professional agency. I think it not only shows the professionalism to our officers, but certainly to our officers, but certainly to the public that we serve that. And some of these proofs are not easy. It takes, it's a great deal of effort. What we will be required during 2025 is to show our proofs for those hundred and forty-six best practices. Submit all that in 2025 and become reaccredited in 2026, but it's going to be a heavy lift. Gail Truax is the one that's leading that with help from the staff, but it's, it's a big, big challenge.
Chief, are there any agencies locally that are accredited?
I'm sure there are. I just, being honest, I didn't check. There's only eighty in the state, but I'm fairly certain that there's several here in Southwest Washington. But it is a lift. There's quite a bit that they, that they need to achieve to be able to get this recognition. Monitoring what we get from the public, what we hear from you, what we hear from when we do a town hall, traffic engagement is probably the biggest issue that, that is brought to our attention. One of the things that we're working on better is using data to drive it. Yes, we do monitor every one of the complaints that come in. But those can be one offs, because one person sent in a complaint doesn't always mean that's where I needed to devote all the resources. What does our data say? You may be familiar that we had the fatal accident several weeks ago off of Main Street. Said, what does a snapshot look like of all traffic accidents that we've had in the last year? So what you're looking at is there's some that's not included on this map, but what you're looking at right there is a snapshot of the reported traffic accidents in twelve months. So we asked the officers, what are we doing to specifically address that area? So in eight days, that's what they produced. So when you look at the dots there, that's where they made their, their traffic stops in eight days, and you compare it to that. We're certainly in the right area. Does that mean this is where we need to be and we've achieved it? Nope. But we're certainly going in the right direction. The officers are understanding the importance. The officers are demonstrating that they're going to be out there, which is what goes back to some of those original slides of why you saw the enforcement efforts going up so high. Crosswalk enforcement, you've heard it in here. I'm, I wish I could tell you that we've made leaps and bounds. We've gone out and done dedicated enforcement on there. And while we're making improvements, we still have work to do, but to give you an example of how prevalent it is, here's just a quick video. You're going to see the person come from the top of the screen. That's one of our records, folks. And you have some that almost turns in and hits her. Then we're just monitoring, happened to be on that by a drone. So taking this information, using the technology that we have, and then sharing this with the officers of this is why it's so important that we need you to be out there. We just happen to be monitoring this one and doing enforcement there. So I, our hopes are that as we continue to show the officers the why, making sure they understand the why just helps reinforce of why they need to be out there. We were able to acquire new tasers. The reason this is important, if you look at the difference between the last generation and the new generation. On the left, the maximum effectiveness was twenty-five feet. On the right, it's almost double that. It's forty-five. We went from two shots to ten shots, but more importantly, at the very bottom, the technology changed. When you would hit somebody with the taser, you were hitting them with fifty thousand volts. I don't know how Axon has done it, but they have, and now the new tasers that we're carrying only deploy one thousand volts. Huge difference. So I said, okay, I'm a believer. That's a great thing to be able to, if we have to use less lethal force, we're reducing a lot of our risks. But how well does it work? So we have some taser instructors. This taser instructor is about six foot one and a solid two eighty. Because he's an instructor, he volunteered. So this is what happens when he gets hit. That's just one thousand, that's just one deployment. You can see just locks up like a board. The audio is off because I'm sure he made some interesting remarks. But the, what's nice with the tasers is, as you can see, they're already, as it froze, pulling the darts out. Once it's done, it's done. It exhausts them because it, it tenses up. It's like having the worst charlie horse you can imagine. But it gives the officers time to get in there and, and get cuffs on.
When that question on the tasers, it said it went from two shots to ten.
Yes, ma'am.
Does that mean that you only got that many before it had to be recharged or?
You only had two, period.
And then that the taser is done?
Then you had to use, rely on someone else's. The new technology, what makes it that much better is you could shoot somebody with all ten, it will only pick the best three and, and allow it. So it's not like keep shooting them with everything. The other nice part is every single thing that they do, it's recorded. It tells me when they arm it, it tells me how many shots they deployed. It tells me if they gave it another cycle, every single thing is, and the officers are responsible for every single part of that, and they're told that in training. So we have the ability now with the body cameras to be go back and review that as well as look at the, the results that we got from the body cams, or I'm sorry, from the, from the tasers. And then lastly, briefly, we talked about this at the retreat is our staffing levels. I bring this up because we literally today were putting down on paper of how do we keep this up? Over the last twelve years, as we explained, the city grew more than twenty-five percent. In that same timeframe, the PD added one officer. When we look at that is how can we do this? Keep enough officers out there to achieve what it is that council wants and to achieve what the public is expecting of us. Looking at national stats, the easiest number that is, that most people will wrap their mind around is officers per one thousand residents. As you'll see on the very left of that screen, the national average is two point two officers. Washington is the lowest in, of all fifty states. You can see that we did another comparison of cities, cities of similar size, which is in the middle. But in twenty twelve, we were at one point five one. Right now, we're at one point two five. So we're below anywhere that we need to be, and it also has a reverberating effect because they're on twelve hour shifts, which allows them to earn what we call Kelly days, which is just another day off that they are able to accrue. Many of those days need overtime coverage with our staffing. I have one squad right now that has a sergeant and two officers. So their, their regular day, when they come to work, they are already at minimum staffing. If anything happens, if anybody calls off sick, if anybody's on vacation, goes to training, anything, it's mandatory overtime. With only two officers, if they're tied up on an accident, that's it. There's no more officers for the rest of the city. This is where we're at right now with the red arrow. What we are asked for, and this is based off of populations in Washington that are similar size to our city. What we're trying to achieve is adding five officers. The reason that we asked for that, we're trying to get one more officer per each squad and one to the task force. Our drug cases have absolutely skyrocketed. It's fentanyl based. We were averaging two and three cases per year. Right now we're at twenty-six. And it's, those numbers are only climbing. And then lastly, we know that the city's growing. The city's going to continue to grow. If you said add those officers right now, typically it's twelve months. By the time we get it out, we have to get, we just sent two officers to the academy yesterday. We will not see them until January, and it took several months to get them through the background process. What we're trying to do is make sure that we have enough officers that'll be available out there looking at our shifts, looking at our deployments. How can we keep as many officers out in the field addressing the issues that, that we need to address? But that's where we were for twenty twenty-four, what we're trying to achieve in twenty twenty-five. And any questions that you have, be happy to answer them.
Counsel, go ahead.
So you were talking about getting reaccredited, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Does that come with any perks? Like when you try to go for grants or anything to help our police?
I don't believe that it's a grading in the in the grant cycle, but certainly it comes with a lot of perks as a city. I take a tremendous pride in telling you that we are credited. And I think other agencies look at that too, because it's, it's hard to achieve. Saying that we achieved that and then become reaccredited and go through the whole process again. It's, it's a wonderful feather to have in your cap about professionalism.
So I have a question. Does that help with recruitment? People more likely to come to a PD that's accredited?
I think it helps, but I think also what we're, what we've been doing for twenty twenty-four and now continuing in twenty twenty-five. I think that is a bigger chance for our recruitment. People are seeing this. They're seeing that the officers, they, unless I'm completely off the mark, we have happy employees. We have employees that enjoy coming to work. They're getting the job done and they're doing a damn good job doing it. I think that's what's going to help with, with attracting new employees.
Chief, have you had any contact with the school district about the SRO?
Yes, sir, I have.
With the levy and ongoing. I, I'm not asking you so what the plans are, but I'm just making sure that you're, you're, you're having discussions and.
As of last week, Mayor. I, I know that's a whole separate issue. We are very fortunate to have a partnership with them. I believe exceedingly in our SRO program. What our two SROs have achieved in twelve months is truly honorable. They are building relationships with, with some of these young men and women. And I, I worry what could potentially come down in the future, trying to catch. I don't want to say kids is demeaning, but trying to catch kids before it becomes a problem. They're, they're achieving the marks.
Counsel, any other questions, concerns? Some big decisions in the, in the future.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time.
Okay, I believe that concludes the presentations portion. Brings us to citizens communications. I only have one person signed up and I recognize the name, so I don't think I need to go through this spiel if she can behave herself. That's probably a, somebody else we probably know. Anyway, we'll go ahead and open it up for citizens communications. So oh, no, we do have one person, yeah. So we'll open it now. You're limited to three minutes. Total time won't exceed thirty. It's an opportunity to hear from the public. Not an opportunity for extended comments. Please refrain from derogatory remarks, personal attacks, campaign speeches. Please direct your comments to the mayor. We may not be able to respond. We may refer citizens to a staff member for assistance. And if you need more contact information, the clerk or I are happy to help you get the contact information. So thank you for understanding. And first up, Jessica Cole, sorry, walking up.
Hello, counsel. I'm Jessica Cole. I respectfully urge the council to rescind the resolution opposing light rail on the I five bridge. While symbolic, this resolution risks damaging our working relationship with Vancouver at a time when collaboration is crucial to securing EMS, EMS two, which would provide a lot reliable emergency medical services for battleground without raising costs to our residents. Maintaining trust and cooperation with regional partners is essential, not only for large infrastructure projects, but for the core public safety services our community relies on. On that note, I want to raise another urgent concern. Two weeks ago, Columbia River Mental Health told clients they were pausing services for just two weeks due to financial issues and would reopen today. But now we've learned they're six million dollars behind on bills. While a few services are still hanging on, it's clear they won't be fully reopening anytime soon. This includes closing the battleground location. This is devastating news for the people in our community who rely on them. Now people are scrambling to find new therapists, new treatment options, and new providers for psychiatric medication management. That alone is overwhelming. Psychiatric care is already incredibly difficult to access. Appointments are booked out months in advance, and many providers aren't taking new clients at all. But for people who depend on monthly appointments just to get the prescriptions that help them, this isn't just a wait, it's a dangerous gap in care. Missing even one month of medication can be life altering. It can trigger a full blown crisis. And if this continues without real alternatives, we will see more people relapsing. We will see more overdoses. We will see more mental health emergencies that impact not just individuals, but our entire community, our schools, our first responders, and our already stretched health system. I understand the city may not have the power to fix this directly, but you do have the power to speak up. I ask you to raise alarm, ask questions, and do what you can to support residents through this crisis. At the very least, people need to know their city sees them, hears them, and refuses to look away. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Next up, Mark McNamara.
Hi, guys. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
So my name is Mark and I am recently moved here for two years ago, and I'm a developer. And before that, I before I moved here, I finished up the Ridgefield National Wildlife Refuge, which was a, like a wetland type thing from the Army Corps of Engineers, a federal project. And it's, I have you guys ever been there? It's pretty cool, right? Yeah, it's awesome. Yeah, there's a lot of trails and, you know, you can see all kinds of things. Good for the elderly and lots of bird watching and things like that. So the reason I wanted to talk to you guys is because I noticed a big difference, having been involved as a developer in Ridgefield and then now being involved in this community. I think that we could do a little bit better of a job collecting credits and getting those types of funds for projects here. And have you guys been to the, the wetland that we have? Like the, there's the trails and kind of goes by the bridge and the bridges are kind of falling apart and stuff like that. It's still a really cool place. Have you, it's like.
You're talking about Salmon Creek, Morgan Creek?
Yeah, yeah, the Salmon Creek, Morgan Creek. Yeah, yep. So those, it's in the, if it's in the same watershed, basically the way the army works is they take those credits and then they use them to to build parks for the community in the area, because it has to be within the same watershed. And then in my house and my neighbors' houses, we've noticed that some of the wetlands that have been infilled, the credits weren't collected. And I think that that's just not great for the community, and I think that maybe if we looked at a maybe a more streamlined process of how we might collect those credits and make sure that people are kind of following the, the rules with wetlands. Because sometimes if the, the way the wetland credit works is you you purchase a credit from the Army Corps of Engineers, which allows you to fill in the wetland and develop, which is great, because a lot of time the wetlands are in places you don't want them to be, and so you're allowed to move them to other places. And if that process isn't followed correctly, then you end up in a situation where the unmitigated, unplanned, unabated wetland can cause problems for surrounding neighbors and also for the community at large, they lose out on those parts. So that was why I wanted to talk to you guys.
Thank you, Mark. Do we have anybody on Zoom, public comment, or anybody in person?
No one on Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
No other further comments in person? I, I will add on to Mr. McNamara's comments. I believe there is an open house coming on, on that park, April, the Thursday, April twenty-fourth. I have to pull up a calendar. Yeah, April, April 24th, uh, 6:00 PM at the Cedars Public House. So you might see me there. All right. Uh, and that's a county, county project, by the way. So, all right, um, all right, that brings us consent agenda. Uh, we have four items on the consent agenda. Now would be the time if anybody wishes to remove one for further discussion. Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing here, none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes as presented. And which brings us to the business portion and the Mark show again.
Evening again. Give me a second. I'll pull up my slide.
Pretty timely, uh, presentation with the, uh, accident reports on Main Street and 20th, I think. So while Mark's pulling that up, I, again, I want to thank Wasdott for getting back to us so quick on this. I was utterly shocked.
Hopefully someday it'll show. Okay. Um, so as we've discussed before, Wash Dot did a speed study on SR 502. Um, you can see here on the map, uh, they looked at different areas for speeds. Um, they plotted out all the accidents, which you can see is the orange dots. Plotted out all the fatal and serious accidents, which are the red dots. So kind of based on all of their studies, uh, they're proposing to lower the speed limit. Um, approximately, uh, in front of Albertson's, uh, to 30 miles per hour from the 40 miles per hour it is now. Um, they're would like us to support that. So because the speed limit is within the city limits, we need to have an ordinance that approves it. Um, we currently have that in our code. So, uh, the ordinance you see as part of the packet essentially just updates that code to, um, update to their proposed speed limit. Um, one of the questions that we asked them when we talked to staff was, um, with the upcoming project at 92nd, would this change in the near future? So it's very likely that this will move farther west as that improvement comes in. Um, right now, the kind of engineering that I always talk about, so the medians, those sorts of things are kind of east of 29th and that helps justify the lower speed limit. So when, when you get further improvements out farther west to the city limits, it'll likely again support a lower speed limit. So um, essentially I'm asking for two things tonight. One is to set the public hearing to address the ordinance. That would be at the May 5th meeting. Um, and then Wash Dot would like, uh, email or letter from me supporting this. So I would just like to get consensus from council that there's general support for the speed limit reduction. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, if we would focus on before any motion, just a, approval of said letter and path forward, uh, Deputy Mayor Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So they're only going to lower in front of Albertson's to 30.
Yeah, at, start at Albertson's over to 503.
What's, what is the 50 to 40? Isn't it being lowered there too? Back at the?
Right now, that's where the, the 50 mile per hour becomes 40. So they're proposing to keep that, have a small stretch, remain 40 essentially, and then have the 30 start by Albertson's.
So how do they? That's great. You give us 30 mile an hour speed limit. I'm going to be the opposite of the mayor right now.
Well, I, I didn't say I was happy. I was happy they got back to us quickly as well.
Okay. There's, thank you. We are happy they got back to us quickly. The results of this are horrible. It's 35 mile an hour in Dollar's Corner. There's nothing in Dollar's Corner. And you're in the city limits and they want to say 50 and 40. And oh, we're lower to 30 in front of Albertson's because there's been a few wrecks. Like, that's insane to me that these idiots are freaking running the show. Because why do you have 35 in an area that has four corners and a stoplight and limited access? And you have 40 right there at the, the mini storages and there's a lot of traffic to come out of that area. Lot of traffic to come out of that area. Um, you got truck parking on the other side. So, I mean, it just, it blows my mind that that's what they come up with. Like they sit down and say, oh, this is a good idea. Let's give them 30 at hours. How about at their city limits? You know, this is still, I mean, it's crazy to me that the other day I was driving out that road on purpose, doing 40 mile an hour. The other morning, there's no one doing 40 mile an hour on that road except for me. And so, I mean, it's crazy to me that, that, you know, that that's what they want to do inside our city limits. I I think we need to send it back to them and say, we'll take the same speed limit you have in Dollar's Corner. Nothing more than what you have in Dollar's Corner. Because if it's good enough for Dollar's Corner, it should be good enough for Battleground. They don't even have a vote. There's no one out there. There's just four businesses on the corner and a fire station. So and maybe that's what it is. Maybe it's the fire station they slow it down for. I don't know. But it doesn't make any sense to me that we have this speed coming through town when we have fatalities. We've had two of them there within the last six months. Um, it's crazy to me that that's what they came back with is, uh, 200 foot section. Well, I guess it goes 30 all the way.
Yeah, although.
The rest of the way through town, but to 503. Move it back another half mile and we're good. You know, like, I don't get it. So that's where I am on it. I don't, I don't like it. Sorry. Good work though.
Uh, yeah. Customer refer.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I thought we were going to get the 30 miles per hour all the way to where the storage facility was going to be, because they have that street coming out from the neighborhood and then everything past that was going to be 40 and then 50 is, was I misunderstood in that? So we're just getting it right where the parking lot starts, where the bank is right there. We're not going to the storage?
Yeah. So they hadn't done any studies at, uh, up until this point. So based on what they've, what they've studied, this is their recommendation.
I mean, I'm kind of, yeah, I'm a little conflicted on this myself because I was, I was okay. I mean, I, I want, my desire has been to reduce Main Street, um, specifically because of all the incidences that have occurred. Um, I really was really liked the idea that was going to, you know, that street where, you know, the, um, neighborhood comes out.
29th.
Um, I, I mean, I understand why. Again, I, I don't understand the whole Dollar's Corner either at 35. I think many people probably don't understand why you're jumping from, you know, 40 to 50 to 35. I, I, this is where I disagree with, um, Deputy Bowman, that I don't think we necessarily need it 35 because there's not a lot out there. But I definitely wish we would have gotten the 30, like I said, past there. That's a bummer. Um, at this point though, going forward, I would be, I mean, what, what do we have here? They've already, we, what? Take it back and ask them, hey, can you, can you look, do a study a little bit further out? We take it what, how we have it now, what they've given us, but moving forward, hey, can you, can you do another study that goes out a little bit further? I, I don't.
I don't know if another state's going to show. I guess the question is, what are the options bringing this back? Is it, is it this or nothing? Because it's their road?
No, I mean, we specifically asked about the, the farther west and the point they were trying to hammer is the additional improvements will essentially create the engineering that will, you know, help lower the speed. Because I think, you know, as we've talked about before, just throwing a sign up isn't necessarily going to change anything. You can change it with enforcement, education, engineering. Those are the three things. And quite frankly, all of them in tandem is typically what works. Um, so I think from their perspective, they're waiting on the engineering piece of it, which is the intersection improvement at 92nd. Some of the new projects that are going to happen out farther west on 502, that will change that Jersey barrier to medians. And so you'll start to get that feel and, and from their perspective, that's when the, the engineering will be there to justify a lower speed. With that said, we can say we're not okay with this and push back and see what happens. Um, I don't know if that's going to go anywhere, but if, if that's the direction, that's the direction we can go.
Councilmember Kipers.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I agree with everything council members have said in terms of a disappointing result, but obviously they've limited their scope of what they studied. And either we need to ask them to open up the study further. Um, but bottom line, I think we all feel strongly that we need to make a change sooner rather than later. I mean, I hate to see this have to go back and forth when lives are at stake. I mean, this is something that could be addressed. Um, we don't have a lot of control over a lot of things, but getting the speed limit, unless there's something I don't understand about, uh, Washington DOT and, and them having responsibility for that road versus what we can do. I think it's important to, you know, move forward and press on this.
Especially with the high school going in on that road.
Yeah.
Any other comments? I can't see, um, Councilmember Overholzer, if you're there, you're just going to have to speak. Uh, I can't see your hand raised if it is ever. So just interrupt me whenever. He's muted himself.
So Mark, years ago, I mean, I can't, I, it was, I think it was when we were talking when back about 2016, we were talking about the connecting Washington stuff and and we know that these are state highways, but it was said and correct me if I'm wrong, that we can set the speed limits on roads through our town, even the state highways.
Yeah, we have to, I wish I had the state law in front of me, but there's something in there and I'm not going to remember the wording off the top of my head, but it's up to the jurisdiction to set it, but Wash Dot also controls. So, and that, and that's, I believe, why they want the ordinance, because they, they don't have the you know, legal authority is the right word, but essentially they need our authority to ultimately approve that speed limit because it is in our city limits. And there is the RCW addresses that. I don't know that that gives us, you know, just to, you know, say, hey, it's going to be 25 and we're going to throw out the signs. I, I, I would ask for attorney, you know, opinion on that sort of thing. But yeah, there is a connection in the RCW about setting the speed limit on state highways.
Because I think that's, you know, we, we've, we've went to them in 14 years. You know, we've went to them and tried to get them to work with us and this is the best they come up with and, um, and it doesn't matter if it's 502 or 503. And so I think we, I think we just need to tell them, this is what our, this is what our speed limits are in town. And if you have a problem with it, you know, get two of the guys that work for you, come take down the signs because you can't mow the lawn. So why would you ever come out and take down the sign? And so I think we just need to push back on them. Um, you know, we're maintaining the roads right now from a uh, beautification standpoint. Um, so, you know, they're really not bringing anything to the city except for a little bit of maintenance on them now and then. And, um, I think we just push back. I would like to see us push back and say, no, we want to slow these vehicles down. And we want to make it safer in our community and we don't believe that you're doing that with what you're doing right now.
Just theory crafting hypothesis. Let's say we, this motion, or this motion, this, um, ordinance as written. Uh, this is based on their recommendation, but there's nothing to prohibit us from changing that ordinance to whatever speed limit we want, because they have no authority over this ordinance. So we could theoretically put Deputy Bear Bowman's favorite number in there as the speed limit and pass this ordinance and see where it goes, correct?
Theoretically, yes. I don't, I don't have any answers to where that would go, but.
My, my point being is, I mean, and, and do we have to set the public hearing with the numbers in? Because we can change these numbers after the public hearing. These are not set in stone, correct? Once at the public.
Yeah. So it's, it's our code, it's our ordinance. We can put in there, you know, what we want, whether that will go anywhere with the state. That to me is the question.
I understand that, yeah. But there, I mean, there's your communication.
And you push that.
I mean, um, but no, my other question was more parliamentary and, uh, uh, parliamentary, uh, for this. Were able to modify this ordinance after the public hearing, correct? Or would we have to have another public hearing if we amend it?
You, yes, Mr. Mayor, you are correct. You can, uh, modify the ordinance after the public hearing. You just have to have the public hearing on the ordinance.
Okay. So that's what I was trying to get at. So, so right now we're not deciding on any speed limits. This is the proposed language. What we're deciding on is sending a motion to have the public hearing. Personally, I would recommend anybody who's making a motion to put your preferred speed limits in there. That will give Mr. Hersick some, Hersick some talking points when he goes back to Wasdott.
And Chris just looked at that state law. So essentially what it says is that we can put, you know, what we want in the ordinance and then, um, it has to be approved by the Secretary of Transportation. So that would be where our possible roadblock is, you know, I don't know.
Well, we'll, we'll might have to get the legislative committee to drive up to Olympia at the speed limit.
Or not. I guess.
We'll make good time through battleground. Then we'll have to slow down through Dollar's Corner, but we'll get there.
So I'd like to make a motion to set the public hearing for May 5th.
Uh, let's, let's get the title, please, first.
Ordinance number 202504, an ordinance amending Battleground Municipal Code Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.8, Miscellaneous Traffic Regulations, Section 10.08.030, Speed Limit on State Highway 502, and Section 10.08.040, Speed Limit on State Highway 503.
Okay, thank you. No, sorry. Please, your motion?
So move to set the public hearing for May 5th to hear public testimony on ordinance 2025 dash 04 with speed limits of 30 mile an hour inside the city.
Second.
Who was that? Councilmember Kipers?
Point of clarification?
Please.
So that would be all the way to 92nd? You wanted to go 30 miles per hour?
That's also 503. That motion also includes 503 assets in city limits. He's saying every state highway in the city limits would be how?
30.
30. Discussion, please. Motion on the floor and has been seconded.
I'm just, I'm not in favor of that new language.
What, what are you in favor of?
Um, well, like I said, I, I like the, the idea that 30 was going to be going out to where there's going to be traffic coming in and out of residential areas. But when you go past that area, as of right now, currently, there isn't any, you know, there's nothing out there at this point now going, when that stuff, you know, I guess I kind of am going to be going along with what Wasdott's saying as, as that stuff starts to develop. Then that's when I would be more inclined to reduce that, um, that speed limit. I could just see. And then 503, I, I'm in favor of 503 being reduced. Um, not necessarily throughout the whole ci- city limits, but because there's sections, again, I'm more like lower speed is usually around your residential and, um, just oh, yeah, I don't know. I, that's, that's my problem, I guess, is it all through, all the way to 92nd at this point, this doesn't make sense to me right now. Now going 503 up north, I, I do think it's weird to have that at 55. You're going from, you know, straight through. I, I agree with you. 55 is definitely too fast. Um, but again, there's no housing yet there. So to reduce it to what, I, I would be open to have that conversation, but I, and 55 again is just too much. But I don't know that 30 is necessary at, right now at this point. Oh, there's Eric. Who wants to chime in?
Are you done? Councilmember Overholzer? I see.
Uh, thank you.
Uh, thank you. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you for your time, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I I actually, I wholeheartedly agree with the Deputy Mayor Bowman's motion of thirty miles an hour through the state highways, north, south, east and west. I mean, we do have development going on all the way out to ninety second. Currently, we're gonna be looking at residential going up that hill. We have a high school going in out there. It 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 makes sense to me to get people started now, getting used to doing the speed limit of thirty miles an hour out there before residential gets put out there and we have larger problems. Yeah, so I I I fully agree with that motion.
Thank you for your input. It's very helpful. Next up, councilmember Derosers.
So I have a question about this. So we're talking thirty on Main Street, but we still have thirty five on Southwest twentieth and Northwest twentieth. No, it's thirty five.
It's it's thirty, it's higher than thirty other places, point taken.
Right, it's.
But we also, we can control that, so we can change that. The the process was.
We decided we weren't, or we talked about that we aren't going to change it because the numbers didn't come back to support lower speeds.
Correct.
Clarification. I think.
So what's your um?
Oh, I'm just wondering why, why would we go thirty? The only thing I can think of is that we gotta go hard at Wash Dot to make them bargain with us. We're gonna go thirty, maybe they'll come back with. I don't know, I guess maybe it's not reasonable, but um. Yeah.
But that's that's where you're having, that's where you're having your accidents. So that's where your street, your lights are being ran, things like that.
Uh, councilmember Davis?
Thank you. Um, well, this is turning into a little bit more complicated business here.
The map, nobody wants to see me.
Yeah, um, I I don't have a problem with thirty going out to ninety second. Um, that I don't have a problem with for everything that even uh councilmember Overhauls or said. Five oh three, I'd like to have a little bit more in-depth conversation than um scoop that into this particular um, discussion. There's, I think, uh, councilmember uh Victoria Ferrer brought up some good points about north. Um, so I I don't know if we really wanna mix all this together right now. I I am in full support to extend it thirty to ninety second. But I don't wanna mess with five oh three right now without more discussion. Sorry to make that more difficult for you.
It's, that's fine. Uh, we just make everybody so we could get consensus uh moving forward. I think it is important to have some sort of consensus on this. Uh, I I I agree with the concerns on both sides of this. Uh, we do need lower speeds, but uh, I think we do do something that's practical as far as getting it through Wash Dot. I wonder if we uh said anything, it's fifty five goes to forty. And so we make five oh three forty and we keep we don't, we'd have no fifty mile an hour speed limits essentially, state highways in our uh, in our city. We say the max is forty, and then we tell them where it's below forty, be my preference. Be at thirty at uh before ninety, twenty ninth there. I think uh Councilmember Ferrer is correct on that. At the, and it, and I agree, I would I rather have thirty all the way out to Dollar or ninety second? Yeah, I'm just not sure that we're gonna be able to get that. Um, so I wonder if we just go forty five oh three, forty out to oh, right there where the storage unit is, or thirty out to where the storage unit is, and then forty out to ninety second.
They already have it at twenty five out there most of the time right now cuz of construction.
True.
So as they're building that out, we're gonna have more and more construction. We're talking about what? Little over quarter mile? The edge of from twenty ninth to ninety second.
I think it's a half.
Half mile?
Yeah. Oh, no, it's four five nine to five one seven, so about three quarters.
And I think it's a good point, all the construction coming out there. I mean, I again, I'm in support of going thirty all the way on five oh two as well. Uh, I worry wrapping in five oh three, we may lose the fight on five oh two.
I don't, I don't have a problem with, well, five oh three, so this is what happens if you've been around a while, when they did the property at Rasmussen, they were talking about a signal at Rasmussen. Uh, one of the developers here in town did a survey of what it takes to drive from one seventy ninth through town at I think it was thirty five then, thirty five mile an hour versus what it is now. And the difference was like a minute and a half or something like that. Difference to to go through town. And so you know, definitely, once you hit Main Street there and you go north because of the widening there at the Safeway and the way we I I I address that all the time, so I see it all the time. I've seen the accident there last year. The way we arrowed that makes it seem like you gotta get over quick. And so everyone's moving quick when they don't realize that you can still has the same merge lane it always has, but everyone wants to jump over as quick as they can. And so that backs up quite often now. Um, going into a single lane there. And so um you know, if you're coming across that and and even the trucks, um, the trucks that are coming through there and the truck traffic that's coming through there is enormous. And so I think that that's you know, at some point in time, we're gonna slow it down. And it still may be a fight with the state on it, but you know.
But I mean, I I don't think we have any reasonable chance of getting thirty on five oh three, do you?
Five oh three is gonna be tougher. Um, I I do think it will be tougher. I think we, I think they probably would drop it to forty because that's what they, that's what they're doing down through the orchards area. Um, and it has the same, it it has the same type of limited access as it does in orchards now. And so um I think that may be, may be a uh a little bit more of a challenge, but that's something that we could you know.
Go ahead, I'll make a motion to amend. Go ahead.
Um, yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I I'm appreciative of the forty. Um, for ninety second, the, that concept, um, I would be I would be okay with forty. And then like, um, as soon, because like um Mark had mentioned about Was Dot, and and once all of that stuff comes in, you know, it'll start changing. You know, the the way people drive, their behaviors, you're gonna be putting a roundabout there, you will have more housing. I think that would be a perfect time to change it then down to thirty because of all of the housing that will be coming in. The same as if you go five oh three north, we're talking about putting a roundabout on Onsdorf. I think, like you said, um, you and Deputy Bowman had mentioned that, yeah, maybe they would be fine with forty cuz um, but I think definitely uh they even uh even looking at thirty after the roundabout goes in there cuz automatically you're gonna be having a slower speed and who wants to crank it up just from the roundabout to you're gonna have to automatically slow down. So it would be um, and next, just to finish with this, I was wondering if we could get any input from the chief? Maybe if you have any input on this. Sorry to put you on the spot, sir. This is your area of expertise. A little bit more.
I think, you know, when certainly the issues there on Main, we we've seen it, but what we're trying to get better at at the PD is uh make our enforcement efforts based off the data. And when you see what the data shows, we have a serious problem there. Forty, thirty, fifty, uh, certainly, I, we've all seen some of these areas. It it's mind boggling why it's fifty miles an hour in some of these areas uh that now have residential. I think council's aware well of that as as a city leadership, and they're working towards it. But to opine on uh if you know, reducing down on thirty uh for five oh three, I think that some of it, we have to kind of wait. And the other problem is just being honest is uh the amount of enforcement that we can do with with what we have and trying to prioritize that. And that's kind of what back to that presentation, putting our jammers out and where's our biggest violations? Where can we be out there to make the most difference? I think that some of it is almost wait and see.
It be a fair assessment to say that if we were to put these speeds all the way to ninety second at this point with already your limited resources of officers, that would put more of a strain on on you guys?
Well, I mean, it's just where we're gonna prioritize. Certainly, it would cause a a bigger strain, but um we also have to worry about you know, looking at that traffic flow. I think that uh what Deputy Mayor Bowman said, that if you're talking at a ninety second different, not nine, not ninety second, but a minute and thirty seconds, I I think is what you'd said. Um, we gotta do the education piece. And that's one of the big things I think that we need to continue to stress. We have some very poor drivers uh in and about this area. Um, I'm seriously concerned of five oh two, five oh three and the volume of heavy trucks coming through there. Reducing speeds is gonna make it uh safer, certainly. But to what level, I have to, that's where I have to ask Mark, that's what they do. If if the speed limit's X, we will go out and enforce it. That makes it very, very simple to answer that way.
Uh, so what I'd like to make a motion to amend uh, the motion on the floor, the motion on the floor is to put thirty miles an hour on all state highways uh, inside city battleground, try to make a motion that uh we make the max forty on state highways on five oh three with a max of thirty on five oh two. Is that clear? So what we're doing now is we're voting on a motion to the amendment, or amendment to the motion? Any other discussion on that?
I'll just remove my motion. And then we can, I'm fine with that. So then we don't have to.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, so we can't remove it. So we have to vote on the on the amendment first.
Okay.
So uh, any discussion on the amendment?
Still like my, the forty. That's all I got, you know?
Yeah, so um forty on five oh three, thirty on five oh two. This is just to set the ordinance. We're still gonna have a public hearing. We're still gonna hash this out later, but this just gives us, I think, a clear and concise story.
Okay.
Does that make sense? So uh, all in favor? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, now we're, we've amended the motion, so now we're voting on this uh, to set the public hearing. That's all we're doing. We're not setting any ordinance. We're just setting a public hearing with those speed limits. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, there we go. Clear as mud, right? That brings us administrative reports.
Thank you, Mayor. We just have one. I'm gonna turn it over to Mark to talk with you about Fifteenth Avenue, right away, the intersection of Fifteenth and Main.
Um, so you've heard this from us before, but we're ready to make an offer on the remaining property we need for the Fifteenth Avenue Main Street project. Um, our offers are gonna be based on fair market value, um, as indicated in the appraisal and will be negotiated per city policy. If we can settle within those policy limits, we'll bring the approval back to council via consent. If we receive a counter offer that is more than policy allows, uh, we will bring it back to an executive session for discussion with council. Um, all I'm asking for tonight is approval to make those initial offers. Um, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if there's any.
Any questions? Any heartburn with uh given guidance on this? Thumbs up? I'm seeing consensus.
Thank you.
And I heard you had some good news on projects going forward with our federal and state partners, correct?
Yeah, so for, um, I'll just give a quick update, but um for Grace, we got the NIMPs decision. Um, so that's leading us down, uh, I believe June or July, we'll get the final NEPA approval, which will allow us to do full right away um, without having the hodgepodge that we were gonna have to do. Um, and then on the twentieth pathway, the permits all submitted to Ecology, so we're waiting on them. We just got back something from them. I think Friday of last week, just asking for a couple additional documents, pretty minor stuff. Um, so that's well underway. So, yeah, right at this point, um some of the CDBG stuff too, we got some good feedback and positive decisions. So right now, our environmental stuff is going well. Hopefully, I didn't just jinx it.
You bet, yeah. Well, if if you did, then we know whose fault it's been all along. Okay, is that uh end of, end of administrative reports? All right, that brings us council communications. Any council communication, council member communications this evening? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So I've been out a little bit and um I've been watching some of the stuff that's going on in the county right now. It's been quite interesting to uh say the least about the vote on the bridge and light rail and what the county has done with their council. And I just wanted to set the record straight on a few things and find out from our council too, where where we are at and where we're going. Uh, we had a former council member do an op ed stating that um that we in the past have uh treated council members who would not go along with uh with other council members or go along with uh working with our state partners as lepers and shunned shun them and remove them from their positions on boards or commissions. And um I just wanted to point out that in the time that I've been here, we have never done that. We have never um, that I know of. And I just wanted to find out from you guys if if any of you have felt that there was boards or commissions that you were shunned from, you were not allowed to serve on, you wanted to serve on and didn't, um, because this seems to be a hot topic right now. And um I know when I was mayor and and I know Mayor McCoy's deal deals with it quite a bit. Usually what happens is those boards that don't get people to serve on fall to the mayor. And the mayor ends up serving on them and representing us on those. So I just wanna make sure um or find out if anyone on this council has felt that they've been shunned or have not been able to serve on a board or commission. Okay. The second thing um I wanna find out and is, it's been said that each by a former county councillor, each councillor should vote their independent vote as a representative and in the best interest of the boards they sit on. We have always had a policy that when we um serve on our boards and commissions, we serve on behalf of the um the council. And um I know the county's got different things in their governance manual, maybe than we have. And I wanted to make sure that we wanted to continue to do that. Or do we want to take the same approach as the county and let each individual person that sits on a board or commission vote however they would like to vote? Or not the county, but but uh some people, this former county councillor to vote how we would like to vote instead of necessarily how our council has given us direction, or if people feel that that's an issue here um, when we represent or when we go represent the city um on behalf of council. So has that been an issue here for anyone?
Said a discussion point people wanna bring up and change our policy?
Well, I'm, you have a board meeting tomorrow, right?
No.
No, when is the?
Fifteenth.
That's the second Tuesday.
I know, I don't know why.
The third? Okay. Well, are you planning on going with our vote, like?
I'm, I don't think this has anything to do necessarily with my vote coming up.
No, this has to do with any of our votes as council members. So like for me, on Discovery Clean Water Alliance or on Left One or um you know, boards that we sit on, uh, Trish Fruit Mosquito, um CDBG, CRADC, any of those boards and commissions, are we representing the council or are we representing ourselves as an elected uh member of the community?
Well, I've always thought I was representing the council as a whole, the city, the council.
I think the question is, what what do you want?
That's, I'd like to continue doing that. I don't want one person representing.
Anybody else?
Is it clear what it is?
Well, I just, I just wanna make sure. I know the county had different things and and that's a lot of stuff I hear. Um, I've heard a lot of things out there that um, you know, we represent um, and and the county is elected. um, and and the county is elected by districts also. Um, but I've always been under the assumption that that when we go to these boards or commission meetings, our job, um, and sometimes it's hard, that our job is to represent the council and whatever the council, whatever direction the council wants to go, that's the direction we go, whether we like it or not. This has become quite an issue in the county right now. And um, saying that you're an individual voice, you should go represent um, yourself and and what you believe on that border commission. Um, and so that's, that's what I want to find out is is I want clarity of what we are doing as a council. And and when we come back and we give reports, what that looks like.
Councilmember Overholt, sir?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, from my perspective, um, I think anytime that we are sitting on a committee or a board uh, where we are representative of the city, we are a representative of the council. Um, that's kind of why Troy, I I would say you came back from your, you knew a CTRAN vote was coming up and you said, you know, I want to hear from my council on how you want to move forward with that. And even even further than that, like for EMS two, technically, I'm the representative for four cities. I'm the representative for Battleground, Ridgefield, La Center, and Woodland. And so um, I can't just uh, in that perspective, I can't just vote the way I want to vote, but I I think I I have a duty to represent the places that I technically represent in sitting on that committee or that board. That's just my two cents.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Kipers?
Uh, obvious. Thank you, Mayor. Um, obviously, I haven't been appointed to a board yet or a commission um, to new, and that's okay. Um, but I fully believe that if, when that time comes, that that would be my expectation. I'm representing the council. Um, otherwise, I'd be coming in as a separate citizen, trying to be on the board. I don't even know if that's possible on some of them, but uh, no, I feel strongly I'm representing the council and that's what, the way I would want to approach it in the future.
And I think that's, that's what I just wanted to make sure that we know because it's, it's always worked well for us. Um, this has become a hot point right now in the in the county. Um, and you know, we we have been thrown under the bus um, by a former council member saying that that's not the way uh, it is for us, that we we um, so you know, the the mayor selects who they want, you know, certain people get to serve on boards. Um, those, those were all uh, lies that were told years ago uh, when I first ran that um, you know, the CTRAN representative got a five hundred dollar car allowance and they got all this stuff and to be on CTRAN and the mayor held out the spots for their buddies and stuff like that. And I think most of you realize that these boards and commissions, they're, they're a lot of work and some of them are more work than others. And um, you know, it's nice to have that supportive of your your council.
Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. Um, do we have it uh, in writing? Anywhere in the governance manual about, I know it does about appointments, but
Yes.
The the way that.
I've uh, um.
I can clarify, we but we were asked that question by all of the cities because of that. It's in chapter four of the Governance Coordinating um, Manual. Uh, chapter four talks about how individual council members are placed on the committee and it's originally by the mayor with consensus from the council as well as being removed. And then chapter four, section two of the manual outlines the duties of council members and their appointments to all of these boards, committees, commissions. It states further that the council member's sole purpose in attending these meetings and participating as an appointed board or commission member is to represent the city. And as such, during those meetings, council members may not act as a representative of any other business group or organization without the express consent of the council. Communications from board, boards or commissions to the city council, which seek action or feedback are to be acknowledged by the council.
So based on that, that works for Battleground and I think the county is different. So I very careful not to to assume anything what's going on with them. But I mean, we seem to have it written, so I don't really know why we need to discuss.
Well, I think the question is, do you want to change the governance manual? Are you good with how it is? Because right now it does stand the governance manual to that point. So I think that's the question on the floor is, do you want to change the governance menu? That's how I understood it anyway.
Well, because we've been, it's been brought up that we do the same thing.
Oh, gotcha.
And so I wanted to make sure that we.
I I think it's, I mean, I've said it a couple of times. I said it in when this whole CTRAN thing came down and and interview with the reflector, you sit on you don't get elected to the CTRAN board. You get elected to your council, who then appoints you to that board. Nobody's directly elected CTRAN. You're serving there on behalf of whatever council sent you there. So from from my aspect, it's real crystal clear on how that should work. Um, and I, it's worked well for us and it, it protects the city, it protects the council and uh, from somebody doing whatever the heck they want to. Uh, so. Yep, I think we have a consensus continue. So, all right, any other council member communications? Seeing none. The time is nine oh four and we are adjourned. Thank you.